Hearings.
Yeah, probably caring.
Right here?
Nope, two down. Where you were.
I have the wrong glasses on. Thank you. Thank you. Are there enough seats for everybody?
There's three over there.
There's another chair here. I think here's. Maybe.
We may have some people trickle in, so we might as well get them right now. More coming. Hey, how are you doing?
Hi, Becky. How are you?
You will.
Good to see you. Hey, Fred.
We won't go, but you will read this. Hi, how are you?
Is that the new thing?
Sign in. We didn't know where.
There is a sign in sheet back there. But Amy, is there another sign in sheet, Amy? Um, Ms. Amy, Shannon will help you with the sign in sheet. She's standing up back there with the cream sweater. Thank you. You might want to announce, Commissioner, if everyone hasn't signed in, that they please do because they may.
She wants to run her maiden like that.
I don't know.
Are there enough seats? Do we need more? Alex, do we need more? Chairs? There is a sign in sheet, so please, everybody, um, sign one of the sign in sheets back there.
Might need another sign in sheet. So how, when you guys say the one minutes, we'll have to decide looking. Like three. Yeah, so I will. I mean, that's up to you, of course, but just doing the math. We have to have another one. Perhaps the board can have, you know, another.
How you doing?
It's up to you. Prayer is always good.
John.
For hurt with a prayer.
How you feel about whipping up a quick little prayer?
Don't you? That might be dangerous. You tell me, sir, when you want me to call the roll and I'll do that.
First, after the roll or before the roll?
Probably first is usually, I think, then the roll. I think it's first and the roll. Yeah, pretty sure, yeah.
We're gonna have standing room only.
We're gonna get a couple of board chairs and.
Yeah, open the player with, or open the meeting with the. Pleasure. I just hit myself on this. Yeah. Oh, here, I got two bucks. Oh, you got.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, much bigger.
Ten thirty, it's one thirty. Will these on? Yeah.
Everybody, please rise. Forming our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hickey, can you put the microphone, please? John Hickey, our EMA Director, lead us in prayer.
If we could bow. Our Father, we are grateful to live in a country where we are all free. We pray to you today that this meeting will shed light on procedures and the proper way of moving forward and spending the money that's been put before this count. And all this, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Hey, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Cantile Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco. Mr. Malloy.
Here. Okay, this is a special meeting that was called for the purpose of discussing ARPA-related items. We are going to keep the focus of this meeting entirely on ARPA grants, the process, the timeframe, and assisting the public with the ARPA rules and regulations. And as a board, also for us to discuss priorities in regards to ARPA funding. We will probably start out with a little bit of housecleaning administratively wise with Mr. Masaki, Commissioner Frenchco, Commissioner Cantile Mesa, myself, as far as our parameters. And then we'll get into the more specifics of the grant process, the categories. And if you have pending grants, at that time, after we kind of feel that we've got our legs under us with the process, then we will, if you have questions regarding your grant or the process, you can approach the microphone. Uh, we need to make sure everybody that comments addresses the chair and is called upon. And then when you approach the microphone, you need to state your name and where you live, who you represent regarding your grant, uh, so that the public listening, people watching, this is televised. Um, the people are watching, uh, will know a clear record of who you are and what was discussed here today. Um, our main goal with this thing here today is, uh, to be polite. We want to work together as a community to spend this money that's been blessed on us, uh, through the pandemic we all had to deal with. And now we need to be responsible stewards of that money as a community to make sure that money gets to causes that are going to further the betterment of Trumbull County, further health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, and create a great living environment post-pandemic with these funds. So if we keep that in mind, we keep the ultimate goal at the end of us all working together to have a better community, I think that'll make the process go a lot better. Uh, we aim to be fair with everybody here. Uh, we don't have any predisposed visions or goals that we've placed on, on people. Um, this is an open process here today. And if you're not a part of a community or someone's requesting grant and you have questions, you are encouraged to, uh, to comment. Also, as long as it pertains to ARPA and the betterment of, of, of the goals with this whole process. Um, with that, I, I would remind everybody to please sign in. Um, there are sign in sheets, um, at the table. And, uh, again, this special meeting is called, was called today for the purpose to discuss pending and future American Rescue Plan Act ARPA applications with the applicants, the public and the press, and to discuss any other ARPA-related matters. So we will stick stringently to that focus. Um, there is a public meetings on Tuesday. There is a regular meeting tomorrow where there's a comment section if you want to talk about other things, but today is, is ARPA-only related stuff. I'm new to this process. The previous board has been dealing with this for the last year and a half or two years. So I, I've got to catch myself up to speed on some of the stuff also. But I am in, in unison with all three commissioners. We've discussed it up here that we want to spend this money fairly, and we want to delineate the guidelines, the parameters and, and the process to make sure that, that everybody gets a piece of the pie in the county, that we're not discriminatory toward any one branch or agency or region. And especially those, I feel, and, and it's been expressed by other commissioners. The villages, the small towns, the townships, the people that have often been left behind by government are treated fairly inequitably in this whole process, so that everybody feels like they have a stake in this process and everybody gets their piece of the pie to help their community to make our big county as a whole better place for all of us. Um, with that, let's start off Mr. Masaki. Uh, he is our, our special projects coordinator. And he has been the key point guy when it comes to ARPA funding. Um, and Mr. Masaki, if you can just kind of give a, a gist of the process as it started, where ARPA came from, the goal as you know it with it, and then we'll get into some further details as far as the, uh, the categories, things like that. But everything kind of starts and ends with you, uh, first. So if you can introduce yourself and start off.
We have Jim Masaki. We have.
You may need to hold the microphone, Jim, uh, close to you just because of. There you go. You want to hold it? You can do that too. It pops out of there.
There we go. That's better. Okay. Um, yeah, the, the main thing is, um, we have all of our applications online. It's very difficult to say who qualifies at times and who doesn't qualify. Every application we get, the commissioners are going to review and determine if they want to seek a legal opinion from our legal counsel. To make a, a determination as to whether or not the project qualifies. Even if it qualifies under ARPA funding, then it's up to the commissioners to decide if they want to, they want to fund it. So e- even though some projects are very good and very well-intentioned, they may not actually qualify under the federal rules. The federal rules are quite onerous. Uh, when we first got the COVID money, that was pretty much more of a loose end process. Commissioners could spend the money on almost anything at the time that qualified for governmental services. But the, under these regulations, uh, the federal government says we were probably too lenient the first time. This time, we're going to put a lot of rules and regulations. So everything we do is very regulated. And what I mean by that, there's probably been some people I see in here that have gotten, gotten some COVID monies through the commissioners. It's a very detailed process. So anybody who gets an award, it's not, it's not just simply getting a check. Uh, you may, you have to fill out a lot of forms. You have to qualify. And your project will have to qualify through our legal counsel. Since it's such an open-ended process here, the main thing is submit, submit your projects. And that's what, that's what the commissioners have been arguing for everyone to do. E- even if, even if they don't qualify, there's no harm in asking. So we've probably got about eighty or ninety, I think, applications on file. We've probably approved maybe fifteen, twenty over the, other than county projects. Uh, you know, Gary Newbrow, uh, through the, through the sanitary projects has been, you know, have been the recipient which benefits a lot of residents throughout, throughout the county. So some of the outlying areas may have different rules and regulations if they're going to receive county monies. And we really haven't had much chance to talk with our legal counsel. I was hoping she would have been here last week. Uh, she's going to be there tomorrow. But we have to make some determinations as to how we have to proceed. You know, for, for funding of those projects. Um, even projects that qualify, we don't really have a hundred percent of the process down. If it's, if it's a, say, a township or something, those are not items that we've generally dealt with before. Most of the times, we're dealing with county agencies. We're, we're either receiving the money directly or we're giving it out in grants. Which, under the grant agreements, we have an eight-page agreement for that. Uh, so everyone has to comply and share here in the, in the commissioner's office has to file reports for every dollar that we allocate and every dollar that we spend. So it's, it's, it's a very detailed process. I don't want to get through too much more. But I, all, all the thing I would do is encourage everybody to keep filing your applications. The, the money can be appropriated through, uh, 2024, and it must be spent by 2026. So there is time, but you do want to proceed, you know, as soon as possible so you can get the money allocated.
Mr. Cantile Mesa, do you have any input?
Sure. Uh, so, so since we started this, uh, journey, unfortunately, all of us that have been on, um, we know that, uh, there's been, uh, a lot of, as Jim mentioned, a lot of red tape, a lot of rules and regulations, a lot of things that we've had to follow. Uh, we've been able to dole out some of that money, uh, already and, and work with our legal counsel on some different, uh, some different projects, whether they be in county or nonprofit or, or small business loan and, and grant program. But at the same time, we recognize there are needs in the townships. There are still needs for, for growing and improving and new, you know, programs for nonprofits. We know that are still out there. We know that there are, um, when it comes to race equity, there are different things. I see, I see, uh, Bishop Perrin back there. I see a lot of different, an eclectic mix of different asks for applications that we have here. Now, just like everything else, we have a finite amount of money. Our demands are increasing every day. Uh, we would love to fund every project to the hilt. Uh, that probably can't happen, unfortunately. That's the, that's just the reality of it. So it comes down to us prioritizing what's a lasting, what's a permanent, and what's a sustainable uh, improvement for our county and for the census tract. It's going to benefit and for the households and the businesses that will benefit. And I think we need to be as exact and as objective as we possibly can be. And I think that having scoring sheets that I prepared for the commissioners, if they'd like to see these as well, as opposed to picking arbitrary numbers, we can, we can score projects individually. Uh, these were created in unison with our planning commission. Uh, that way, we're not arriving at decisions just willy-nilly. We're arriving at decisions through thought, through objective, uh, analysis and through weighing all the pros and cons of everything. Um, that's how we probably should go about things. And, um, you know, it, it, we, we have, we have, everybody in this room has a worthwhile project, first of all. Um, or projects. Some, some communities have submitted two or three projects. Um, it's going to be up to us to not only decide on those projects, but to defend our decisions for those projects. So we want to do so as objectively as we possibly can, and that's my opinion on that. You know, we've been able to do some very positive things, starting with the CARESAC money. You know, with three million dollars going to local businesses, uh, whether they be for all the grants or expended right now for, for the grant program that we have. We've helped over two hundred and ten, uh, businesses in Trumbull County with our, with our dollars. Now it's time to look after our townships, our nonprofits, and, uh, the needs that we need here in the county. All of those things are going to benefit the taxpayers. All of those things. Every project we do, uh, in my estimation, at least that I've seen, is going to benefit the taxpayers. There's a process. We have to find if it's legally acceptable, first of all. And then we move it forward with our objective analysis. And I think that's how we have to go about it.
Commissioner Frenchco. You, you have to talk to the mic, though, if you talk, because they can't hear from back there and the microphone can't go beyond the midroom where the TV is, or we'll get feedback. They, they, they're not going to be able to hear you on, they're not going to be able to hear you if you don't use a microphone.
Commissioner. Commissioner, can I? First of all, Commissioner, I'd like to address that. These, these scoring sheets were passed in 2020. You voted against them, if you remember. Do you remember that? Go look at the agenda meeting minutes. Frank and I voted for the, using these scoring sheets. You voted against it. So I, I know you want to have your own narrative here, but it's just not true. And you had ample time to have any meetings you wanted to have and organize any meetings you wanted to have for ARPA funding. I didn't see one meeting you held, one public hearing. None. I, I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to argue. We have a lot of people here. This is a positive thing. But I, I do not. I want to set the record straight. That's what I wanted to do. We have voted on where we spent money.
Commissioner, in all due respect, I've been elected to do that, and so have you. And we could do that ourselves. There's nobody in the staff that knows all this ARPA stuff. You don't know it. I don't know it. Morrow doesn't know it all the way. How could we expect a clerk or a receptionist to know it if we don't know it? We're the ones that are paid to do this, to roll up our sleeves, to go through it ourselves. We all have access to the same data that Mr. Masaki gets. There are public computers all through this building, and your computer has not been broken for three years. So that, that's not an excuse. We all need to take this responsibility ourselves and move forward. You could sit there and cast blame on the past two years. I wasn't there the last two years. Right now, I'm here. You're here. Morrow's here. The public's here. Let's not worry about that. Let's move forward and do the most responsible thing without pointing fingers at anybody. Please, I implore you. We have pretty good sheets here that I can understand totally. I don't know why you can't. I mean, this, did you get these same sheets we have up here today? With the ARPA projects, the revenue replacement, the request through the portal, how much has been funded, how much is pending? I have all this right here in front of me that I could see. Some of these have been around for weeks. You were put in charge of doing it a month ago. If you volunteered, I put you in charge of ARPA. I put you here and you didn't do it. That's why we're here. Please, let's move forward positively.
Let's move on.
That's what the gist of this meeting is, for us to get our ducks in a row with that stuff. No, I, I have the whole stack.
I have all the applications right here.
You're not the only one with all the files. I've been reviewing these things for weeks now. Okay, with that said, approximately, we started out with about thirty-eight million dollars. And approximately twenty-three million of that has been spent, according to the paperwork we have. If not spent, it's in the process of being spent or it's been allocated to one area or another already by the proceeding board over the last year and a half. That leaves roughly fifteen million dollars available. We have roughly right now about twenty million dollars in requests that are pending. Some of them are extremely large. Some of them, um, we may be able to trim down and still fulfill a wish or for that township or that entity while not robbing from another entity of not getting, not getting something. What Commissioner Frenchco and I agree on wholeheartedly, and she's brought it up and I've brought it up, so that's why I'm saying that here, is I would like to see about half of that money spent in the non-traditional areas, the townships, the villages, the, the small communities. And if we earmarked about seven and a half million dollars, if that's half, if they accurate, if the math is correct, Jim, then that leaves approximately three hundred thousand dollars for each township or each small community to, to grant and get requested. It would still leave seven and a half million dollars available for the other entities, sewer, water, um, EMA vehicle, things like that, that we have not funded yet, but we've approved. And if we need to dip into that, what I'd like to establish out of the three of us is if we had to lower that number to two fifty or two hundred and then let the groups give us their best request and work with them to get so that every township gets something and everyone township gets something fairly inequitably and not just the loudest wheel gets the most grease or someone who's skilled in grant writing better than another community that has volunteer, um, trustees that, that are busy in their, their own careers. We want to make it fair for everybody, at least I do. And I, and I think we share that common goal of fairness that we would like to see. There are some entities that requested much more. You know, there are some people, there are some million-dollar requests and nine hundred thousand dollar requests and things like that in there. And that's part of the stuff with the rating things is it, is us looking at it as three commissioners of what is the most responsible use of the funds? And are we gonna basically screw another township or another entity out of getting what they want in favor of this other project? We have to think of the greater whole, the greater good. If every piece of the puzzle moves forward in the same direction, that's good for everybody. But we don't want one entity to, to sit at the table and eat too much in regards to this. Um, but there are some projects that do take precedent. Uh, Gary Newbrow has had a lot of sewer projects, but that's something that we are building on for the future, for the whole county. It's going to make the whole county better. The infrastructure issues, broadband, sewer, water, internet, phone, that's all stuff that's going to be better for the, all of us in the county eventually, and going to make the value of our whole county that much, that much more proper, that much better. Not that it's any more important than a historical building or a park or anything like that. But it's something that's long-lasting that I believe when the government gave us this money, they wanted this money. They steered a lot of the rules and regulations to put that into infrastructure, put that into, uh, the communities being able to thrive and survive, in my opinion. Um, so I would like a consensus ultimately through this that we know we can look the township officials in the eyes. We can look to people and say, we're going to put this aside for you. Give us your best grant that you have to. we're going to put this aside for you. Give us your best grant that you have the best use of the funds as we dictate. And then hopefully we can just do our job and and not rubber stamp it, but approve that money going in that entity and then trust that you're doing it the best way you can for your township and your citizens, which are our citizens also. So that's my two cents with that. Commissioner, do you have any differences with that? Or am I on the right track there? At least can we agree to that? As is Meadowbrook, from what I understand. I got a letter regarding that as we all did this week.
Those are some things to consider. Especially, you know, just coming from a grant and planning background, you don't want to have these communities lose money. I think from Newton Falls, yeah, that's a good example of that.
And and we did. We did ask Gary to fill the forms out, and we did instruct Mr. Masaki to turn that over to legal. So that is something that's pending already.
And just Commissioner, I I agree with you actually, and that project like that, like Newton Falls, where Newton Falls, this the city is going to, the village is going to benefit. The the township is going to benefit, and ultimately the county is going to benefit. When you have that sort of regional benefit to something, that needs to be scored very high. I mean, you're you're talking about a lot of entities that that's going to assist and help down the road, not to mention the people and the businesses.
The other leveraged funds should also be included as a factor.
Sure. Because because if they can't, if they can't access those other millions of dollars without that leverage money, the project doesn't happen. It's all to be considered.
Okay, as far as the parameters of that stuff of what we're talking about here, are we on the right track with what we're saying here as far as is your input? Does anyone have anything regarding that regarding the structure, the process of what the dialogue we just had? Is there any input on that for the greater good that anyone would like to express before we move on to individual specifics? Well, she you did. She did make a motion up here that died without a second to earmark $7 million for that at a meeting two week, three weeks ago. And it died without emotion. So that's changed apparently. I still want to say roughly half of what we have left. We got to do a legal. I wanted we're going to find projects that fit in those categories. So I'm not saying we're going to stray away from that. But when we prioritize on either half of the money, we do have to take those things into consideration. And that may be something with Newton Township where we do 300,000 and then the other 600,000, we take out of the other half of the seven and a half million. That way, we're meeting the township goal that I have, but at the same time, we're into the other seven and a half million for the greater good of all citizens half. So I'm not saying we don't fund it. Just saying it's how we split it up so that the next person or the last in line doesn't get crumbs when everyone else gets a big piece of the pie. Yes, sir. And you have to please, we need that microphone if we could and state your name and where you're from.
I believe it's almost 30 historical societies. We have more historical societies than any other county in the state of Ohio. And that that's what makes us unique and special and gives us a sense of sense of place and helps with tourism and short term economic development and long term because someone will come here and say, hey, this is the place we want to live. There's it's got a very unique sense of place. It it's it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful place to be in Tremble County. We have so much history here. And some of the projects we funded at a higher rate. One of them was incredibly important because it was the the main historical society and and they actually help with artifacts for the other historical societies. And since we have so many projects and there has not been a process relative to the applications. We had a list of applicants that didn't even know that we had the the requirements to apply online. And and they just kind of got left in in limbo. And some of those were historical societies. One of them was a very small ask in Mineral Ridge. And I, you know, I go through all these applications and if we are going to be doing something for the historical societies, I think that that might be something that we look at and ask if we can give a a small amount to all who applied so that we don't end up giving more to one and less to another because they're all unique, they're they're all relatively small, and a little bit of help goes a long way for a a historical society. So that's something that I'd like to see if the board can look at. That's why I wanted the staff to go through and categorize these so that we can look at things like that. How many do we have left that are history? Historical societies that we can, and what are the asks? And and then how can we divide those? Like, those are things I think it might be good for us to give in an equitable way.
I agree. And and I think a lot of the historical societies are tied in with the townships. A lot of the ones, the grants that I've seen are tied in with the township somehow. So I think that falls within that category. For the record, though, ma'am, before Ms. Frenchka, Commissioner Frenchka spoke, what's your name and where are you from? Yes.
Julia Shutt, Leveitsburg, Ohio.
Shutt.
S H U T T.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, sir.
Yeah, Todd Williams, I'm trustee in Fowler, and I can appreciate what you're saying about this historical societies. We have a small one in Fowler. But what we're actually looking for is road repair. And we're not looking for anywhere near close to 300,000. And I guess what I heard you say is this is what you're looking for for the other townships, but a lot of us aren't going to use. And what I heard was, okay, that money could be there. But it doesn't mean we have to ask for it.
Correct. We don't want anyone to be gluttonous with this. If you're not, you can't use it. If it's not feasible with your labor, your manpower, it'll be put to good use. Some other entity in the county will, and that might be a small historical society. That might be swing sets at another playground somewhere, maybe not in your backyard, but maybe in your front yard.
Yes.
So that's something we do ask. Just because I'm throwing a number out there doesn't mean here's what you get. Use it up or lose it type of thing. Give us your best project. Then we'll reevaluate. We have till 2026. And, you know, there will be other projects that come up that we don't know about yet. So I, one thing we don't want is, and what I think happened is we had a lot of people first to the table and we gobbled up a whole bunch of money in the beginning. I'm not blaming anybody in particular, but what I'm saying is money was spent quickly before township's got a hold, got their chance to get their ask in. And and the other thing is there are a lot of people in this room. Show of hands, how many people submitted a grant before prior to six months ago? And haven't heard anything or don't know what the status or pending is. So we do have some that are that are waiting, and I think we had some that started out, we learned from from Ridgeview Farms that had a grant that was that was 10 months old or longer. And it wasn't addressed until she came to us and said, hey, what's going on with this? And that's where it opened my eyes that we can't make you wait this long. You submit something. We gotta rate it somehow, some way, shape or form, and we gotta do something about it. The deny, set it aside, accept. I don't want to make you wait. You got township business to take care of, and you can't be waiting on us for a year or two years to see if you're going to get money or not.
And I just wanted to be clear. I I understood that, you know, we're not asking for the whole 300,000, and that's not how I took your statement.
And I I assume most townships won't.
Right.
I think most people get it and they won't. And there are some, maybe that's, maybe that's how we fund the extra that Newton Township has and to keep our feces out of the Mahoning River, you know, that benefits everybody.
Yes, sir.
So.
Thank you.
Microphone, please, so it's be fair to everybody listening. All right, please restate that so people can hear. We got to follow the procedure, Commissioner, because the public needs to hear who's talking, what they're saying. They can't hear you without the mic. Proceed, please.
Don't interrupt. Okay. So what we what we have a, we have all these applications who have applicants that have come in. And I asked the staff if they would send something to them acknowledging receipts of the of their application and directing them to filling out a proper application. And to my knowledge, this hasn't happened yet. I wasn't CC'd or told that it occurred, but I asked the staff to do that a few months ago. And I think it's important because there are a lot of smaller communities that do have those applications in, but they didn't come in on the proper form. And when things come into our office, we need to make sure that we respond to them. And that is the job of the staff to make sure that, hey, we've received this. However, there's a certain process that you need to do to have your your project considered. And can I ask that the board instruct the staff to send that out to all those who have not sent in proper applications so that they're not left hanging?
And I think
Wouldn't do as I requested.
If there is something that's hanging, absolutely. Mr. Masaki, I would ask that we, if you see a problem with something, we'll reach out. I know every application that I got, Todd, I called you back. I called every application. I know there's probably six people in this room. And when I got the application, I called them and to walk them through it and personally myself, I didn't have to advise a staff member to call somebody.
There's about 20 or 30 or four. I I it was a very long email. And so she sent me a list of the people, but they need to be emailed the proper way to apply so that they can get their applications considered. And I'd ask the board if they can instruct the staff to do that so that those applica- applications can be considered.
When when those emails came to you, did you email them back how the procedure works, that they have to go online and fill out the application?
They didn't come to me. They came to our office and our staff didn't do that. So that would have been nice.
Did you contact any of them?
I always
If you know that a community is asking for something and you know the answer, why wouldn't you contact?
That's why I instructed the staff to go through all of them and we have a list of them. So to send out a letter from the Board of Commissioners saying, we've received your application two years ago. It's been sitting because no one told you, but it's been sitting here and now we're looking to consider it. So will you please apply through our website so that your project can be considered? I'm asking that you will instruct the staff to do that so that that maybe 20 or so 30 applications can actually be considered.
How are they submitting them?
They were sending them in in paper.
To whom?
A letter to to the office.
And we didn't receive those?
Did you receive them?
No.
Okay, which is okay, so Paula is aware because she went through and found the ones that didn't have the proper application. So there is a list of them and they now they now need a letter so that they can apply properly.
Paula of Avoda Clots Clerk, I was instructed, ma'am, to stay over with Dawn and write a list of pending applications. We did reach out. I remember calling the Western Reserve Port Authority. We did reach out when we didn't see if an application was proper and we called them. We had data work with them. So I'm sorry if you think that we didn't reach out to them, but what we saw, we we did reach out to them.
Can I have, did you send a letter or an email? And then is there a report on if they ended up sending it incorrectly is to know?
I know that the data processing department worked with the Western Reserve Port Authority. They were having trouble with our with writing their application. I know they did reach out to them. We did provide that. The only thing we didn't provide is what we couldn't, three categories that required legal analysis. I reported that to the HR Director, Mr. Masaki, and and yourself, ma'am, that what we couldn't provide, we're not attorneys and we can't provide that.
I mean.
We're always here to assist anybody. Thank you.
Paula, I'm not even talking about that. I'm talking about the 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 people who applied already and haven't applied on the proper form. They're not considered. They're not even on our list. So will you please? I'm asking if the board will instruct the staff to send a letter showing them the right way to apply so that they're not just left hanging.
I mean, if we've if we received correspondence from individuals that are doing it incorrectly, I take everybody here, staff and commissioners, needs to reach out to those people and tell them, you know, there's a, there's an application on our website. It's an email. It's a quick email.
Why don't we send them all an email or a form letter so that we can show that we did the right thing on our end and that they
My question to you, Commissioner, is why didn't you do that?
Let's let's move on. If there's one, we have the applications here. These are the ones submitted through the portal. I'll look through my stack. If there's any that are not on here that I have on my desk. Morrow, if you have any in your file there, if you can take care of it yourself and call the people, if we find one that's not on here. Absolutely. If we miss somebody, we want to let them know. We're not going to ignore them. But it's hypotheticals on who, give me a name of someone that doesn't know that that submitted wrong. Did you send it to myself from Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
That was just pending applications. That was pending applications. That didn't mean they weren't proper. That was just a depending applications with the phone number and contact person that we created for you. That didn't mean that they weren't correct. That's we reached out to who we saw.
Alexandria, do we have an employee anywhere named someone on a human resources role? Someone is us. Someone are the people responsible. So we all need to take it on ourselves to see. Mr. Masaki is in charge. He's the point guy on this stuff. If there is something missed here, I'm sure you you don't just throw it in a drawer if some if someone applied incorrectly.
Simply, all we say is utilize the form that's there and attach a sheet. And I think I did that with several county personnel. So all you need to do is attach a separate sheet. It we don't have
If we were missing a lot of stuff, we would not have
It does not have to be
Room this fall tomorrow of people that applied in one way, shape.
We we won't throw something out over form over substance. We're on the substance, not the form.
Thank you.
Yeah. Procedure in order to fund something. I would like it since there seems to be like misunderstanding that there are some communities that have proper applications in. If we can go through. I'm sorry, I'm just not going to. Okay. If we could go through every single one of these and categorize them right now with Mr. Masaki, since he's the expert who knows what has and hasn't been applied for properly so that we could make sure there's no one hanging.
Can you go through your stack and see if they're already on here before we waste everyone's time with that?
Let's do that. I'll go through that and can someone check them off as I go through them?
You you if you can sit there and do that, then we'll get input from the public while you're doing that.
Excuse me.
I don't think we need to waste everybody's time with every grant. We have 90 of them. We don't need to review every 90 in front of everybody. That's something that could be done.
90 proper ones.
See it. If it's there, check it. If it's not, then we'll address it.
Since I'm a commissioner and I'm in the meeting right now, can I, can we have some an employee? Because we do have seven employees. Can someone please go through these and make sure that they're matching up to the list while we're in here? Sounds like you don't want me to participate and you want me to do busy work.
We can do that after the meet. I I don't want to waste all these individuals' time here on that. That's a menial administrative task.
Okay, thank you for acknowledging that. It's not something a commissioner should do. It's a menial administrative task.
That's where we differ. That's where we differ. I think it is. I think we are administrators and we should be doing that work. We shouldn't be sloughing it on to other people.
Right.
Seven employees in our office.
That's just where we differ.
Are you going to start hearing from other people? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So let's let's go ahead and if you have if you have questions regarding your grant, a grant in particular, something you're not seeing, can we bring the mic up to the front and we'll bring people individually?
Please keep your hands up, everyone and play.
I mean, no disrespect by this.
Yes.
I drove truck all night and I still have chores to do. I know you guys have a dynamic, but I'm sorry. I, I have to go.
That's okay.
Todd, would you like to speak first on yours or bring yours up first of what you have? Can we do that?
No, sir. I'm, I'm going to get online. This is, uh, yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Amy, Amy Giovanni from the city of Niles. I, um, I got lost with all the getting off track distraction. Um, I wanted to go back to where you mentioned that Gary Newbrow has a lot of sewer projects and water projects. And so my, uh, question and my thought is, because I know Nile City, I know Newton Falls, there's a lot of old infrastructure in the sewer and water lines. And I know that the city of Niles has, uh, a project in the works. And, uh, when you said how we're dividing it up, I don't, is there like a triage? What's most important? Because like the gentleman before me had said, he understands historical society is, um, important. But is, is this historical society flooding out? I mean, there's a lot of homes still in what I consider to be old, original Niles. And actually in the word I'll be, uh, running for, um, that flood out every time, like we flood, 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 flood. So I know that we have something that works as a project. Is there that? Is that, you know, according to what is most important as far as lot, people's, uh, everyday living and livelihood and health?
Health and safety has got to come to priority. I said that at the beginning. I think we all agree on that. But at the same time, we can't plum and put water through the whole county and do nothing else with the money. It's, that's irresponsible for us too. There's, you know, there's a, a growth process to get to that. Okay. Sorry, name and township, please.
Sure. Bill Coletta, uh, Hubbard Township Township Trustee. Uh, you brought up a point about the consent decree projects. My question is Hubbard Township is basically starting into a descent decree project. We just are finishing up the planning of it, getting ready to go into the engineering of it. Number one, does the trustees have to apply for funding through the ARPA to the commissioners for that funding for that project? Or will Gary Newbrow take care of that?
Gary has mentioned that on one of his ten projects that are, uh, tantamount to what we're trying to do uh, as far as water and sewer go, uh, throughout, um, Tremble County. That's one of the consent decree projects along with Scott Street and Meadow Brook. So that will be at the front of the list.
So we won't have to worry about.
Something that we have to get done, court ordered, we have to get done.
Okay. Mr. Newbrow, do you have your priority sheet that you had that highlighted with what projects you've applied for and what your priority is? Can you come up and just address so the public knows what your priority is with your?
The, uh, the one other thing I did want to mention, I, I commend the commissioners on trying to split this money up evenly and disperse it to the townships. From my short time, this is the first time I've ever seen something like that. So commendable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What Gary has given us is a, uh, sanitary engineer, ARP funding, water and sewer infrastructure. And he's highlighted on here, there's a probably about.
All right. Well, Commissioners, um.
Over twenty projects on here.
Yes. And Commissioners, thus far you have awarded, uh, the water and sewer projects for, uh, about four point two million dollars. Uh, this money has been spread around onto six different projects. The largest one being the Meadowbrook project in, uh, Warren Township, they were awarded one point five million dollars. That has covered the design engineering contract for all three phases of that project. And as you know, that also includes a wastewater treatment plan on the banks of the Mahoning River. And, um, the design of that first phase includes that, and that is the most difficult phase. And with that, uh, engineering design done, that gets us the Ohio EPA PTI, which when I go to, uh, Ohio EPA for funding, it scores us a lot more points. And I'm looking at getting a four million dollar principal forgiveness award from Ohio EPA for that project in the fall. So, um, these funds that you have given me, I have, uh, used them to, uh, as match funds for much larger funding packages. Uh, the Meadowbrook project itself is going to be well over twenty million dollars after we're said and done. And this one point five million may be the only ARP money that I need for it because of how I can leverage it the right way. Um, we've also done, uh, the Maplewood Park Study in Hubbard Township. Uh, you funded that, uh, engineering study one hundred percent. Uh, it's hard for anyone to move forward on that project unless we know, uh, where are we going to send this flow? And so that's the purpose of the study. What's the cheapest way of getting this built? How many phases are we going to need? How are we going to divide this up? Once, once we get that portion done, uh, the Ohio EPA also received a large AARP allocation where they've got an extra eighty million dollars a year, eighty million dollars a year down statewide to give away in principal forgiveness. And that's going to be there for the next five years. Now we got a big one for Yankee Lake, uh, last year. I spend, I expect the first three phases of the three Meadowbrooks to get three, four million dollar allocations out of that over the next three years. Then we could probably hit the first, uh, phase of Maplewood with one of those four million dollar grants for that one. And I also put together Ohio Public Works Commission Grants, uh, Community Development Block Grants and Appalachia Grants so that we can make these affordable projects, uh, for the residents that are affected. Uh, as you know, we also, uh, uh, spent, uh, two hundred thirty thousand dollars on the state road project in Champion Township. That was a one point four million dollar project and we were able to supplement it with two hundred thirty thousand of ARP. Uh, we had the heat and shoot project and Weathersfield Township is currently under construction. You did award me five hundred seventy one thousand for that one to leverage a three point four million dollar project. So that one is working out well too. Um, and now we are on the, uh, she also gave me, gave us an award for Bezetta Township for the Elm Road Water, uh, project of about one point three million. And that project, uh, was originally about two point six five million. Uh, but I can tell you that, uh, that cost estimate on there, that price has gone up to about three million now. And after we, uh, reconfigured, uh, that project for, uh, the source water where we are now having a different connection with the city of Warren. I resubmitted that to Ohio EPA at the beginning of March. And I'm hoping we can get some principal forgiveness on that and I won't need as much of that ARP funds. So that's another, uh, thing that I'm waiting on. Uh, and then we had one, two, three, four other projects of water there where I submitted the applications.
You just read the names of those as you go to the people there, no?
And Howland Township, a hundred sixty seven thousand two fifty for the diverging diamond relocation. And Weathersfield Township, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the Still Wagon Road Water Improvements. And Braceville Township, four hundred thirty five thousand for the blueprint phase two, the design engineering contract. And Champion Township, three hundred fifty thousand dollars for a water project, uh, design engineering project. Uh, and Newton Township, the nine hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, sanitary connections for the consent decree project. And Viana Township, three hundred fifty thousand, uh, for the Scoville Drive sanitary sewer improvements. Um, and Viana Township, another three hundred thirty five thousand for the Smith Stewart Road, uh, sewer project. And Brookfield Township, uh, ninety thousand dollars for the State Line Road Sewer Project. And Weathersfield Township, three hundred fifty thousand for the Crane Drive sanitary sewer project. And then I've also asked you for six hundred thousand for, uh, sanitary sewer connections throughout the county. And, um, these are spread all the way from, uh, Kinsman to Newton. So those are the projects that have been submitted so far. Uh, a total you've awarded me, uh, four point two million for the projects. And thus far I have requested another three point eight million for a total investment in water and sewer infrastructure of, uh, eight million dollars.
And at the onset of this, Gary, when we, when we came up with a plan over two years ago, uh, one of the preliminary guidelines we thought of, one of the first things that they talk about in the federal guidelines is sewer and water, uh, infrastructure. And I thought ten million dollars would be a good number there. And keep in mind, everyone, all of these projects benefit townships. Every single one of these projects benefit townships, benefit township homeowners and businesses directly as far as the costs that they're going to pay. Not to mention the public health and safety that you're doing with water and sewer expansion. I know ten million is, is, I, I'm willing to, to, to negotiate that number because I know that a lot of townships are, are here and they, they certainly have needs as well. But I think at minimum, we need to stick with that eight, eight million and, and pursue, uh, there, there are so many projects on the books and more to come as a lot of the township trustees know, and they petition for different projects in their areas. We just can't get to them quick enough. And, um, you know, as I said, the federal guidelines, one of the first things they came up with, was, was water and sewer expansion. And I, I don't want to get off topic here, but also broadband expansion. And those are two things that are both lasting, impactful and will be there in time to come. Not to say that road resurfacing isn't important or anything like that. But things like water and sewer infrastructure and broadband expansion, broadband is the way of the future. It's the new utility. And, um, we have large swathes of land in Tremble County that are underserved or unserved when it comes to broadband. We need to be ahead of that. There's a lot of money out there. But as Commissioner Frenchco says, you need to leverage that money a lot of times and the county needs to set money aside to go after that state and federal money. We have a digital literacy problem with our, with our elderly, our, our, we have a growing elderly population and we have elderly that don't know how to get on the internet and are relying on their grandchildren and their children. We have to educate a lot of these people. We have availability of broadband in some areas, but we have people that can't afford to connect. So we have challenges when it comes to water and sewer and broadband. I definitely think we need to set money aside for those things. Not to say that the townships don't get a piece of everything, but but these things definitely benefit the townships because those underserved areas are the townships. Um, so, so, um, you know, it's sort of a double barrel thing. We know that you guys have been underfunded for forever. And it seems like, and you guys have challenges just like we do. If we can assist, we'd love to do that. But keep in mind, we are putting our money where our mouth is with infrastructure like water and sewer and like broadband.
And Commissioner, just a total, another total that we have here out of the eight million of the ARP funds I'm asking for, that, that's going to provide us with over thirty million dollars worth of infrastructure. And for, and, and for every dollar of ARP funds I have, I mean, it is a one to, one to dollar to dollar ratio. That's one less dollar we have to go into debt for. And that's one, that's that much less that we have for, uh, capital charges, assessments, that sort of thing. Uh, the means that we use to, uh, pay down the projects.
Which directly benefits homeowners and businesses with, with, with rates that are more favorable.
Thank you, Gary.
All right.
Yeah. Come on up, sir.
Peter Augusta. Incognito today. The baseball hat.
And, and I, I gotta tell you, I'm, I'm impressed by the sheet. I do see he's got Scott Street as his number one project. So if that's part of the eight million, then great job, Gary. And I'm, you know, I think that's okay.
I'd like to.
Go ahead.
Start off with that, you know, thanking everybody that's been involved in the Scott Street Sewer Projects has been, uh, I don't want to bore everybody with it, but it's been a collaborative effort, the Commissioners, Gary Newbrow, uh, citizens, the city, the township.
And what is your name, sir, for the record?
Peter Augusta, New Township Trustee and Pam Purdy.
They're not able to hit, they're not able to hear you, Pete, if you can pick it up.
Uh, Peter Augusta Township Trustee and Pam Purdy, City Manager, Newton Falls. The city has secured, uh, a, a great amount of money to get the project completed and, and Gary's asking for the, the nine hundred thousand dollar commitment that would finish the, that would seal the deal on the project. Um, Pam, would you like to?
Sure. At this time, as, uh, the commissioners know, the city is under a time restraint. We have to file the application for the two point nine million dollar forgiveness loan. And unless we do that, the project will fail. And at this point in time, the, the village of Newton Falls is not going to go into debt for two point nine million dollars. So in, in your conversations, I didn't hear anything that related to a timeframe as to when these monies would be awarded. Um, because, uh, for the two point million dollar or two point nine million dollar, um, forgiveness loan, we are, so the award is supposed to be in June. And here we are coming into May and we still don't know an answer from the commissioners as to what is going to happen. We have some people here from the Scott Street Sewer Project that would also like to speak on behalf of this project and how important it is for them. As you guys know, it's been going on for twenty years. And at this point in time, you know, unless we know exactly what's going to happen, the village is going to have to turn down the loan and the county will be responsible because you are under a, a court consent decree to do it. So.
Gary, can you speak to that too before we, I, I know you've prepared, um, a, a legal opinion for our legal counsel, Tanya.
So we're interested really in knowing a time.
Sure. I'm giving you the process here and that's where we're at.
Oh yeah, Commissioners, as she mentioned, it is under a consent decree between the county and Ohio EPA. Uh, we would love to get this project complete. Uh, we made a, an attempt to complete that project. Uh, took it to a public hearing back in two thousand fifteen, I think it was, the year you started. And, um, it didn't pass the public hearing. So, uh, uh, we, I've, I have biannual meetings with Ohio EPA Legal Counsel regarding the consent decree in itself. Uh, we've discussed this back and forth and at no time did they ever say that, um, you will get, you, you have to get this built by a certain time. Well, it wasn't a consent decree, we were supposed to get it done by a certain time. But they never indicated they were going to take further action after I explained to him why we couldn't get it done on the first attempt. I even mentioned to them that we may have to go back to court to see if we can get that one removed from the consent decree. But it's never gone any farther than that.
But, but as far as the process is now with, with the ARP ask from the, from the.
Yeah. Well, from what I understand, uh, Newton Falls needs to move forward. They have, they have quite a few things they need. They have to get completed. They have to get a consultant engineer on board. Yes. Put together the bidding documents. They have to, uh, put together the actual application to WPCLF for that principal forgiveness award. They need to bid out the project. They need to, they can't finalize the grant award until, I mean, the, the loan award until after the bids are opened. That's the way this program works. And so they're, they're under the gun. They need to get moving on this. So they need to have, some sort of decision as to whether or not this one is going to be approved. And I'm, and I'm not sure what your timeline is for approving any of it.
Well, we, we, we will see Tanya tomorrow and that's who Mr. Masaki has to submit it to after the application is done online, which you did already. So we can ask her tomorrow what her timeframe is. We're, we're, it's up to her, not us.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to get at. You already, the application has already been submitted. I think that's what they want to know as well.
Yes, it was submitted, I said.
Submitted on behalf. Well, it, it's in legal's hands right now. So whenever they turn it around, we can, we can start moving on this.
And we can ask her directly tomorrow because she will be there at that meeting and ask her what her timeline is. And maybe she can step it up if she knows that needs done. Uh, but that's something that's out of our hands. It's been submitted to her. And until she comes back and says it clears legal, then we can't even go to the next step to put it on the agenda to approve it until we know that it's legal.
Okay. All right. Okay. And here's the spreadsheet.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Yes, sir, gentlemen.
Hello, I'm Thomas Dimitrovich Administrator with the McDonald Village. I'm here today to, to inquire and to show support for a project in McDonald. It has not been submitted yet. I've been working on this project to try to get funding for our, uh, water tower projects through other areas, through East Gate, through Hospital one sixty nine and some other programs that Randy Smith has had. So I'm, I'm bringing it to you today. I see your, thank you for your, you know, your amendable, uh, online application forms. I really appreciate that. I'm going to give you a copy of what I have here now, but I'll, I'll get back to there and, and, and tell you. Uh, I'll, I'll sign up on that and submit that. But it, with, with one question though, that there is still time to do that, of course, right? It's, there is, doesn't seem to be a deadline on that. So just our little project in McDonald, it's a water tower project. We have two towers. just our little project in McDonald, it's a water tower project. We have two towers and, um, they, they serve two municipalities, actually three. And Gary Newbrow may know my district, of course. He, we overlap, uh, some of his, uh, property as well with this, uh, water district. But we're, uh, we're looking to get funding for 555,000 approximately to refurbish our, our towers. I'm actually in need of doing it now. I did have an audit and inspections and I have to get it done. I have the inspections since 2021, trying to get this, uh, going and, and trying to get grant funds because one of the areas in our, in our, in our service for water is the Weathersfield Township Hilltop District, which is a, a low to moderate income area. And, um, so I believe it's going to meet some requirements there for you, but we, uh, we do serve, uh, a part of Gerard's Water District. And if I can secure some funding with the, the commissioners, uh, with this fund, with this program, I can keep from having to get loans and to, uh, increase our capital account to, to pay for that. So, um, it'll be, I'll be grateful if you take a look at it and get me some feedback, but I will be submitting now, that we'll be, be submitting now. So thanks for keeping the enrollment open. And if you don't mind, I'd just like to present you with these real quick.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I am here with our President Pro Tem of Council, Ray Lewis, uh, Safety Chair, uh, of our council, um, Joe Metzinger and our Mayor Secretary Amy Cunningham. So we, we wanted to come show support for the project. It's important to us. Because if not, like I said, I gotta go out and get loans and those aren't bad because, you know, that, that's how it works. But if I can keep any cost from increasing to, uh, the Gerard residents, the Weathersfield residents, that would be greatly appreciated.
Approximately, go ahead.
I, I don't see any other requests we have pending for McDonald or Gerard at this time either. So that's something that, like I said.
We, we do have another one.
There is a historical society one.
Approximately how many households benefit from the project? Do, do we know that offhand? I'm just curious.
Yeah, there's, in, in our water district, there's 1,800 residencies that were directly, uh, accounted for. But then there's a meter on Salt Springs Road that we sell to, water to Gerard, uh, district that encompasses at least another 400 homes. Plus the, uh, truck stop district at Salt Springs Road in 80. Gerard and I both, we, we both supply water to that area. And we, and we do this and we, we supply good clean drinking water as well as fire safety protection.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome. If you have any other questions.
Commissioner, do you have a question? Please, please, you had, you have to talk into the mic or nobody can hear you. We could barely hear you here and nobody in the public is going to hear you and it won't be on record.
I'm hopeful that the, uh, project in Newton Township is eligible. So I don't understand why, been waiting to find out from the legal counsel that doing a.
You're the one that won't let us do anything until it gets approved by the prosecutor's office and goes to legal counsel every meeting.
And now you're telling us something.
Now you're telling us to skip the legal part of it and just go with it. I'm not doing that.
You've got Maplewood, you've got Meadow.
And this is a consent decree from what, 2015?
Okay.
Eight years and now it's.
20 years, really.
Underscore the fact that we've already spent money on consent decree projects, the engineering study in Maplewood, which is Hubbard Township. And there is already, uh, money that for Meadowbrook. So given the fact that we've already gotten opinions that those are eligible activities and it is intended, uh, as a priority to go towards water and sewer and, and infrastructure such as that. If it's a consent decree because of the EPA, I, it is absolutely eligible. So I just, I don't, I don't understand why, uh, the board was saying that we needed to find out, but, um, but that I just, that's.
Well, we have Tanya there tomorrow and maybe she'll say yes tomorrow. If she does.
I Teresa Bartlett from, um, Scott Street in Newton Falls. Um, I'm really confused at this childish bickering back and forth that is stopping business because you don't want to listen to any valid points she has. She don't want to listen to any valid points you have. This has got to stop. If you need a room monitor, I'd be glad to volunteer. But I want to say that she's right on this point. We're going into May. In June 9th, to be exact, of 2021, Newton Falls received an email. And this was when we were decide, when you had $38 million from ARP that had not been distributed yet because you're waiting on the state auditor to tell you how you could spend those funds. And on that date, we, Newton Falls received an email from Mr. Newbrow suggesting a proposal of $820,045, $455 of that money to be used for this project. Then there was a workshop in July of 2021 about the House Bill 168 money, which was another eight million? House Bill 168?
Eight million, what's that?
Well, um, we did. Statewide, and it got divvied up. So about eight million came to the county of that money. What was the MO? Okay. Here's my problem with that. Where the money went. We filed based off of the EPA guidelines, which you used to distribute that money. We scored the highest. We got not a dime. Okay. So then in August, uh, uh, actually 2021 is when we asked for some of that money for this project. I went to this EPA myself and found out from the EPA, and I could give you names and dates if you want. I have it all documented, that they are not going to do away with the Scott Street consent decree. They wanted it done. In fact, they met with Pete and I several times and guided us through this principal forgiveness money. We got 2.9 million dollars of that money. The city got 875 in Ohio Public Works. We're doing all your work for your consent decree for less than 20% of the project that we're asking for. And you're telling us we're in the 11th hour, could possibly lose all of this money and have it come back to you. Cause let me tell you, if this drops the ball, we will be pursuing liability on your part for dropping the ball. There's no reason why we can't get an answer today that that money that's proposed is awarded to the Newton Township project. It's a no brainer. It's a fraction of what you're responsible to pay. And it's not acceptable to keep passing the buck to something else. Now it's the legal. You've passed a lot of things with this $38 million without going through legal.
I have not. I have.
You have not because you just got.
No, we haven't.
I, I, I highly disagree.
You can disagree, but it's not true.
Okay. So why can't you do this one? Why can't you do this one?
I, in my.
Why can't you do this one?
In my defense, first I ever heard Scott Street was last Tuesday.
Okay.
So the, I am new to this process.
Well, that's, then, then you need, this has been going on for two years. So.
When did I get presented anything on Scott Street until last Tuesday?
Okay.
When, when did I get presented?
Here, here we go. Wait, 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 again. Here we go again. Here we go again. Here we go. It's your fault. It's your fault. It's every time you point a finger at someone for a point back at you. So I get it. You're new. I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, but now you've been caught up.
Right.
We've gone after all of this money. We're in the 11th hour. We need an answer. We need the three of you to do your job. And we would like an answer today. You're here, you're in a meeting, you can make, make a motion, you could pass it, you could take care of business.
I, I do want to correct, correct the record that the money that came from that, um, separate bill, the commissioners had no, um, ability or involvement on awarding that. Uh, that came through the county, went to the state and the state made those decisions. So I just wanted to let you know that that was out, outside of our, that was by the state. Yeah. But it, it wasn't. I understand, but it was decided by O D O D. We had nothing to do with that. But as far as this goes, I do agree because we've already spent money for consent decree projects that this is eligible. Well, I don't, I don't know that this is a discussion and our agenda is specific to discussions. So so I, I wouldn't want to make a motion to vote on something because it's really specific. It doesn't say that we're voting. It's a special meeting. So I don't want to go outside of that, but I.
Ma'am, we, we passed this. We talked about it at our workshop. We know the importance of this. I was at your public hearing. We tried to pass this in 2015. I agree with you. There is never, ever, ever going to be an opportunity like this for Newton Township. We're going to take advantage of it. I promise you. And we, the answer is we already took it to legal. Our process is legal. Has to tell us that it's legal to do. That's how we do things here.
I feel confident that she's going to say it's okay because we've already.
I know you feel confident, but there's nuances in every, every different project. And I don't want to audit finding, come back to the county because something went wrong or some, you, you understand what I'm saying? I have a job to do too. At the same time, if our process is to go through legal, get the okay, then we move on it. The first step of the process is done. All three commissioners agree that it should be funded. We're just waiting on the legal. I, you, you make it sound like we're not for the project.
That's what you're so.
I think we're all in agreement on this.
Well, we, we would really appreciate an answer tomorrow and you have the pressure to, to work with legal tomorrow and to, to vote and, and get it done tomorrow.
That won't be a meeting that we can vote on, unfortunately, as Commissioner Frenchco said.
Excuse me, I'm Brenda Twiliger from Newton Falls. I live in the area that is being discussed. I have here letters that I have kept ever since living there, starting in 1988. In 2005, I have a letter that says, we were listed as a priority for this sewer system, 2005. Let's hold up.
Well, when I took office in 2015, we had a public hearing. It was.
Yes, and I have paperwork and letters and everything that shows that. But again, I've been waiting since 2005. There are projects I would like to have done at my house. I put a bath in the basement that has been held hostage since 2005. We don't, it's ridiculous. When we first lived there, we were both working and the economic problems would not have been as great as they are now this many years later, when we're both retired. And prices are only going to go up. It's only going to hurt us more and more. So please consider how long we have been waiting and hearing about this project.
I remember being at the public hearing and I, I didn't know if I was going to get out of there alive because.
I've been at every one of them myself. Thank you very much.
Peter, Peter Augusta, Newton Township. Um, you're correct. It, it failed in 2015 because the sewer rates were too high and the people couldn't afford it. That's, that's what happened. We negotiated with the city for a fair rate. The EPA approved it. Uh, we had a town hall meeting Thursday and there was probably every bit of 80 to 100 people there. We asked for a show of hands and 95% said, yes, please get this done. So you have the support from the citizens.
Thank you. And I, I believe we do too. And the one fact that I'm waiting for too, that was discussed at the meeting is 112 homes. A lot of them are going to be tied in for free, which usually isn't a service provided to other township residents to tie in for them and save them the money. And there's supposed to be a figure coming back to us on how many are going to qualify so that we have real numbers that we know how many people are getting tied in for free on the taxpayer's dime. That's something we need to have those facts presented so we can make a vote. I am in support of the project wholly, but those are still figures. We can't just say what's going to be between this and this, and it might be this or this.
Right. Correct. That's right. That was what we kept, because we looked at CDPG funding and we look at the H S T S funding that we had meetings on. And we came up with the 900,000 as a, as a benchmark that you guys would use. And that's what we're asking our attorney for.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yep. Commissioners, Mark Ragazine from Eastgate Regional Council of Governments. If I may, I have a handout I'd like to provide you two. I've already provided it to Commissioner Frenchco. Okay. So, uh, Eastgate put in a request for $50,000 for broadband technical assistance from the county. Uh, this, this funding would allow us to continue our planning, project identification, uh, grant writing and just overall general technical assistance for the county. Uh, we have a tremendous focus right now on the unserved and the underserved residents that, uh, have limited broadband access, limited broadband access to the tune of less than 25 megabit download speed and three megabit, uh, upload speed. And the FCC currently considers that underserved. So really anyone below 100 and, and 100, uh, down and, and 10 up is actually considered underserved as well. But um, I was at a meeting with the Johnston Township, uh, trustees about two months ago and, and both you there, actually Commissioner Frenchco was there as well. And those residents have tremendous needs in broadband in terms of working, uh, educational opportunities, telemedicine. These are problems that most of the 10, top 10 townships in the county suffer from, uh, and including other townships as well, like Brookfield, Vienna. I see Phil Peg back there as well. Um, but, uh, this request for Eastgate basically comes because we're not funded to do broadband planning. Uh, our funding from the county right now is to do transportation, environmental, uh, safety, transit, uh, broadband is a program that we've kind of patchwork funded over the last couple of years through a series of grants, either from the state government, uh, or through the ED, uh, Economic Development Administration, uh, and also the NTIA. So those funds are going to run out this year. And our request will allow us to continue the work we've been doing in broadband for the next two years. We've also made the same request in our other counties we represent in Mahoning and Ashtriaula. Uh, Mahoning has approved our request and Ashtriaula is pending. Steve, did you want to add anything? I have Steve Christian from.
Yeah, I want to, I would thank the commissioners for getting together on a public forum like this. I think it's important to, to listen to everybody. But I think it's key as we, we saw with COVID, more working at home, uh, online learning, online shopping, uh, telehealth. And that's one thing that will benefit the entire county because it's unfortunate, but there are many parts of Tremble County that don't have decent internet access. And it's, it's a shame. It really is. And I think what we need to do is we need to be planning. What Eastgate put together is feasibility study a few years ago that was funded in part by you guys. So thank you for that. And what it, what it reckoned as the number one recommendation was we need to come together as a community, all three counties, and put a plan together in place. We've done it and now we're starting to execute it. The one thing that, and I came on board there from Jim Kinnock, one thing I would say so often we see groups that maybe do some studies and nothing comes of it. Difference with Eastgate is you see a study, you see planning and they see implementation. And so I would encourage you to approve our request.
Thank you both. I, I just like to say, um, I mean, I guess I touched on it before, but the importance of broadband and, and what that's going to mean moving forward. Not only if and when there's another pandemic, but I mean, you have, um, kids in different schools that don't have access to in, you know, internet, they're going to their public library and during COVID, when the, when the library was closed, they're in the parking lot doing their homework, you know, just for the broadband access. Uh, it's something that's inexcusable. We need to be ahead of it. And, uh, I know these two gentlemen here have worked very diligently. We had that nice meeting last week with the state of Ohio. Question and answer period that Eastgate hosted. I want to thank you for that. I know that there's some work that we can do with say Ashtriaula County as far as regionalizing some of these towers so that it could benefit them and benefit our northern townships. Uh, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you both.
And that one is.
Trying to keep this moving.
Just for the record, that one is already requested through the portal. It is one definitely we have here with their $50,000 ask. Okay, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Beth Haddel. I'm with the Matthews Local School District. I'm the president of the Board of Education and I'm here with Russell McQuade. He's our superintendent. Our district covers Fowler and Vienna Townships and a portion of Courtland. I do have some information I'd like to hand you while he's talking.
Good afternoon. Again, my name's Russell McQuade. I'm the superintendent of Matthews Schools. Uh, just grateful to be here tonight and I want to compliment Commissioner's office on how nice folks have been to me and, and I appreciate, uh, the, uh, opportunity to just, just be able to say a few things here. Matthew Schools, uh, currently has about 650 kids. Um, we've struggled with passing. Um, we've struggled with passing levies and bond issues. Uh, the current building, uh, that's, that houses the high school. Uh, is a hundred and eight years old. We're in process of moving or doing in addition to the Baker Elementary School. Building where we're adding about seventy-four hundred square feet and that, uh, will help us to close a building that is in Fowler. Uh, which houses about a hundred and thirty kids. Uh, we are beginning, uh, the process of trying. Away at the ask for the. Okay, I kind of shut off, so I'm going to talk loud, sorry. Um, and so with that said, what we're, we're trying to do is, uh, bring. Uh, the students from Curry Elementary School over to Baker Elementary School. So the reason I'm here today is that, uh, we have a septic system there. That, uh, is about twenty years old. It, uh, it is going to be needed. It's going to be in need of update when we start to add on more. We want, we have a vision of putting grade six through twelve, uh, also on this property. Which will put about six hundred and fifty kids eventually, uh, on that particular property. Uh, we are, uh. I met with Gary Newbrow and Mr. Newbrow, thank you for, for, uh, helping me to construct a, or actually he did a, a certified, uh. Cost proposal, uh, for the project, which is four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, uh, to tie in, uh, Sheridan Road. Uh, to the, uh, one ninety-three where the, uh, current, uh, sanitary line is. Now, this, there's only eight houses on, on Sheridan Road. I know that that's not a large impact. But when we look at the overall, uh, idea that this project would impact six hundred students plus. At least another hundred, uh, and twenty employees, uh, whenever we, we end up getting everybody there. Uh, it has a potential of impacting at least about eight hundred folks. And so, uh, we're appreciative of the time. Uh, thank you again to the office for, for, for all your help in getting this for, uh, everybody.
We, we've received, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
When we do the sewer project too, we'd like to be able to do the broadband along with it. And that's one of the things that we're working on so we can update the technology. Our kids do use the Chromebooks and there's a lot of problems in our. Communities with the access for them, especially when the pandemic hit.
So we'll have a twelve hundred and fifty, uh, foot, uh, area that's going to be opened up and we think that we can put, you know, broadband. Uh, up in that area as well. And I'm a little nervous, so I probably, uh, went over a whole lot in a very short period of time, but, but. Uh, this is something that will be sustainable. It's, it's going to be lasting, permanent and sustainable. In so many ways that will benefit Vienna Township and our students. And we're again grateful for your consideration with everything. Thank you very much.
Here just, just, uh, this is moving kids to middle school or elementary school. This doesn't affect the high school. If you were to get a new high school down the road or this, this is something. That's going to be here for a while longer at Baker.
So currently, uh, we, we, we have grades three through five at Baker. We're going to move in the next year. Uh, we're going to move grades kindergarten through. Second grade to the Baker property with the addition. Then after that, we are going to be working on. Uh, trying to bring another building because we have fifty-five acres there and we want to build a six to twelve building. We also want to build a full-size gym. And so a lot of the reason for the ask is that it doesn't make fiscal sense for me to do these additions. And then add on to a current, uh, into a septic system. So what we want to do is, is if it's just down the street, uh, if we can put monies there and anything that you could give us would be, be just, just really great.
The other plans for that location because I've got a lot for recreation. Is we're looking at putting in a health and wellness center that would be open to the community and we'd be collaborating with medical facilities and libraries and stuff like that. So there would be a lot of usage in that area. And again, that covers part of Cortland, Vienna and Fowler. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you so much.
We appreciate you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Interesting project. It really, it's one of the, you know, we get all these diverse asks and this is definitely one of them, but it's worthwhile, you know. Thank you.
Pastor here.
I'll try to hold it. Pastor Todd Johnson, Second Baptist Church, First Ward Councilman in the city of Warren. I'm standing here as a follow-up to a previously submitted collaborative proposal that was submitted through the portal. Uh, to each of you and some follow-up conversations have happened, uh, regarding the establishment and a capital campaign for. Resource centers in the city of Warren, considering the vast, uh. Uh, loss of those centers that our youth and families once, um, enjoyed and used. Uh, we have had conversations and very cognizant of the budget restraints. On behalf of all the nonprofits who are here, particularly that serve urban youth and seek to do violence interruption and serve all residents. Uh, we've made adjustments and I would like to present to all three commissioners that adjusted proposal. Uh, that also includes over twenty letters of support from countywide organizations. Uh, we do have matching funds that we're leveraging from the city of Warren. As well as other partner entities to put a robust program together that will serve over six to seven thousand households. In Warren, not to mention the entire county. Simply not a recreation project. It is a resource project, workforce development, violence interruption. And in the case that A R P funds can't fully fund our request, we do know that there might be other sources of funds such as violence intervention funds or. The opioid settlement funds as they come in that could assist with this. This is a capital project, just once in a lifetime opportunity. Not just for the city of Warren, but for Trumbull County. Obviously being the county seat, uh, we make up a great big, uh, deal to the population, but also a great deal of the issues that exist. With families when it comes to drug use, job loss, uh, violence and others. And so I'll present all of this to you on behalf of Mr. Thomas Conley and the Greater Warren Youngstown Urban League, T cap. Uh, the Focus Building and Second Baptist Church is a partner church alongside many of our other local churches. And. Before I end, because I know everyone's time is short, I just want to shout out all of our nonprofits, including United Way that serves the entire, uh, Trumbull County area. And they have suffered a great loss in funding and their ability to fundraise. And I really hope that their proposal as well. And my friend. Uh, who not only serves the city of Warren, but also Warren Township in areas that are beyond the borders. And the CFOC building does a great service as well. And so I hope you consider the equity, uh, component of funding. As well as Warren being a county seat and a matching partner in this funding. Any way I, I can help, I can be contacted. Mr. Conley can be contacted. And I hope that we can move forward with this funding. Thank you very much.
What, what is your new ask, Todd? What's the new number?
Uh, it's one million. It was much larger than that even before. And I understand that there are constraints. I understand that's a large number. Again, we're talking being able to fund up to three centers, uh, that will serve thousands of residents, uh, not just, you know. One area, one part of the city and they will be accessible not only by foot to local residents, especially in low-income housing. They're all in the vicinity of TMHA housing, so they'd be accessible by foot, by W R T A and also obviously by car.
The city really misses Rebecca Williams and you know, the.
Rebecca Williams, Delaney Center.
Long way.
Yes.
To, to bridging that gap, I guess.
Absolutely. And we thought, uh, workforce development and even exposing our children to more opportunities outside of the city. Including, you know, nature, uh, preservation and other issues that most urban kids are not exposed to. So we'd appreciate the partnership. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you modifying the initial thing and understanding of the big process. The thing there goes a long ways.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Todd. Thank you. You too.
Okay, sir, you're up.
Uh, my name is Joe Pav. I'm trustee for Mesmo Township. Uh, this is Sharon Grover. Uh, she's involved in the Historical Society. As trustee and the Historical Society, we work together. Um. What we're asking is for a grant for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, to restore the upstairs of the town hall. Uh, short version, nineteen seventy-seven, the town hall sustained a major fire. Okay. At the time, the township trustees and they had just enough of money to pretty, pretty much just put a roof over it to reseal it. Over time. There's been money here and there to make repairs and try to get back to where in its glory days. But at this time, we just don't have the money to restore that upstairs. At one time it was used for community center. There was plays put up there. They actually, to give the experience of the Amish, because they only go to eighth grade, they had commencements up there so they can have the experience of having, you know, graduation. I experienced that. No, I went higher than eighth grade, but I was able to do that. Um, so again, we're asking for that. Um, we'd like to put that back into use again for again, communities that used to have banned, uh. Programs up there. So we would like to ask, you know, consider that. Uh, we, we do have that actros every year and it draws in about thirty thousand people. Um, they use it for, the downstairs is pretty much done. They use it for breakfasts. We actually rent it out every year or we rent it out every year. So again, we'd like you to consider that and. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And Sharon.
Hello, I'm Sharon Grover from Mesmo Historical Society. We work very good with the trustees. Give you a perfect example. We just had a fish fry in the town hall. So we raised over a thousand dollars for that fish fry. So the, the theater and I, I really wish I could do a presentation. It is spectacular. It's a gem. If you've never been up there, um, it's wonderful. We could run it out for travel and tourism. The high school can use it. Bloomfield High School, Bloomfield Elementary School. Unfortunately, the trustees just haven't had the money to finish it. It's a big project. So we are asking for a hundred and seventy thousand. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for thinking of the trustees, uh, the, the townships. We get forgotten a lot. And so we really appreciate that you know Mesopotamia because one time, a long time ago, I had commissioners out, not these ones. And he asked me if he was still in Trumbull County. So I'm glad you guys know that we are Trumbull County and thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Jim, just out of curiosity, was that sent over to legal? Did we, did we forward that over yet? Yes.
We did the Historical Society legal.
Okay, this is the. This is addition. Okay. Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, I got confused. Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bishop David Perrin. I'm the pastor of Monument of Faith Church of God in Christ. And also the C E O of Community Found the Outreach Complex. And I am Episcopal Bishop of Ohio Central Reach Jurisdiction to Mr. Malloy, Commissioner Malloy, Commissioner LaMixit, Commissioner Frenchco. And to all of you who are here, we're very thankful and grateful that there are so many. Wonderful people here who are concerned about our community and improving it and seeking.
Please, if we can keep it down in the back.
Just a little bit.
Commissioner, please, so they can hear up front.
Yeah, it is wonderful to see so many people here who are, uh, energetic, eager to be able to get the kind of help. That would improve our community as a pastor. It is my genuine concern about the well-being of people. I am supporting a lot of the issues as it relates to our roads, our counties. Sours and all the things of this nature, but the common life of people here in our community has been plighted with many complicated problems. Most of you may know, I'm quite sure you do, they're health professionals. One of the major problems is we call mental illness. And things have been demonstrated, effects on families and we have been blessed to be able to start a ministry some thirty years ago, literally. In the heart of what some people, I don't like to use the terminology, it's called the ghetto. I don't know if you've all been or lived, came from somewhere it wasn't so pleasant. So nice to be noted that you came from, which plighted many complicated problems and situations and attitude and disposition. And family values. And I had an opportunity to go and pastor many, many places with wonderful salaries, but I chose to come back home where my mother and my father raised me, eleven children. We worked hard. My children went to school here. My boys played football here, went on into the NFL. But I have done everything I could to try to encourage people to come back home. And to make a effort to try to help this city, this county become a much better place. And as we see so many of you being here today, it is an indication that you love your. Counties, you love your townships. And I'm actually representing the township of Warren Township. Well, we not only spoke our words, but we put our money where our mouth was. We invested in Warren Township in a building that is over one point three five million dollars when we built it. No county funds, no central, uh, city funds, but personal gifts and philanthropists helped us to, uh, to accomplish that goal. I know my time is limited, but that's kind of tough for preachers. But anyway, but anyway, uh, we have done many, many projects. We worked, uh, giving out food. We did counseling. We've did, um, counseling with the court systems. We have worked so much with municipal court. Until judges trusted us to be able to help rehab. We did job employment. But one of the major tasks that we have done most recently, as you all do know, that in the last three years, we've been hit with the plight of COVID nineteen. Something that had hit all of our families throughout the world and we have been working eagerly with the. Trumbull County Health District Department under Frank Miguelozzi and their team. And of course, uh, their concern has worked along with us to be able to become a health hub. In this building. Presently, we've done a number of services in this building, twenty-six thousand square feet. We would encourage any of you would like to come and see where it is. It is twenty-one, I think. Commissioner has been there. It is state of the art and we are in a position to be able to help and to assist with health, health, uh, education. A health hub that provides not only good education concerning COVID nineteen, but the many, many other health issues that affects our families every day. What's the big point here? It is strategically located right in the area where most of those families are plighted. With problems and troubles that sometimes they can't get over, whether it be health, whether it be mental, whether it be jobs, whether it be truancy. We are there and we want to be able to appeal. We've already appealed and we have also modified. Simply because we want it to be a car that rolls and not a car that sits down. So what we have tried to do is to let you know that Trumbull County Metropolitan House Housing Authority, they are in partnership with us. We're also in partnership with Senior Citizen Program currently presently that's being funded. We also have something that is absolutely important. I have a gentleman from the, um, Dan Bonnaker will be speaking just momentarily. Uh, we have what we call Accudose. That is an area where we can help citizens get their proper medication. That they're not under-medicated or over-medicated. So I could just, I could say more, but I would respectfully submit this information to you. Um, the wonderful commissioners to whom we support and appreciate the work that you do. We know that that work is not so easy. But we do pray for you. I want anybody in here to know that prayer does change things. So you're on our prayer list and Dan's going to come and just, just a few words. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bishop.
Thank you, Bishop Perrin. Uh, my name is Dan Bonnaker. I'm the accreditation coordinator with the Trumbull County Combined Health District. Much like the qualitative data that you just received from Bishop Perrin, I deal with more of the, uh, quantitative. And, uh, empirical data that we collect throughout the county with regard to, uh, health outcomes, the general health of the population. But more importantly, the healthcare access. We just completed our community health assessment, our newest community health assessment and our newest community health improvement plan here in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, we are still poring over much of that data to formulate a lot of new strategies. I do have the, uh, data from the previous Chaw and Chip, uh, from two thousand and nineteen. And I will give these maps to the commissioners for you guys to see. And pardon me before I go any further. Thank you so much for your time. Everyone else as well, for your time and your energy. I will be as brief as possible with it. But, uh, as Bishop Perrin commented, uh, we have to. We're looking at a lot of different ways that we can intervene and improve these health outcomes. Um, we are noticing and these maps will demonstrate that shortly, that. Where a lot of our healthcare resources are, is also where a lot of our greatest health disparities are. And that's telling us that there are obviously, uh, social determinants of health that are stopping people from accessing it. Transportation, whatever it may be, whatever you decide to discern, if you will. But we also understand that there has to be a way that we can get these healthcare services to these individuals and overcome those barriers. So the, the first map that I have here that I will furnish to you guys is, uh, it's, it's busy. But the busyness, as you can see, kind of all clusters around the southern half of the county. More importantly, around Warren, as you can see right here. And then the second map. Is actually where all the healthcare providers are mapped throughout the county that we currently have. And as you can see, that's the same cluster. Where all the most adverse health outcomes are. So one of the things that we worked with when, uh, uh, not to reference the pandemic again, we all went through it. But, um, as we worked more and more with Bishop Perrin regarding, uh, vaccine equity. Those individuals that were hesitant to get the vaccine, uh, we. I'll speak out. There we go. We realized that therein of was the issue is that. We needed more connectivity. We needed to go out to those individuals that had those poor health outcomes and have that. Tough discussion and bring the resources to them rather than them coming to us. Uh, we certainly can't go to every household or. Every area where they're experiencing that. So we tried to look for a location within Warren Township. Uh, we certainly can't go to every household or every area where they're experiencing that. So we tried to look for a location within Warren Township. With accommodate us. Uh, Bishop Heron is located right in the middle. Of all of it. So, uh, we're here to support him. We're here to, to provide that quantitative empirical data. I don't go over every adverse health outcome, uh, but. Three of them are preventable. Pressure, cholesterol, things of that nature, things that if, uh, people. From happening, it can improve the overall, uh, health outcomes within the county. So again, thank you for your time as well. Thank you.
I think it bears repeating to the board and correct me if I'm wrong. Not just in Trumbull County, but in Ohio, the biggest obstacle to public health is, is racial inequity when it comes to healthcare. Um, and or one of the, one of the biggest and, and if we can bridge that gap and sort of, uh, act as a. In, in our way, if with through this award, hopefully, um, to, to help bridge that gap. I think we're doing a great service to those that otherwise wouldn't have access to this type of, to this type of facility.
You're absolutely correct. Uh, if I'm not leaning from this data, but the most recent data from two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, we, uh, for instance, infant mortality is one of the hot ones of if you're looking at it from a racial equity component. Uh, children, children of, uh, African-American. So much higher. Than Caucasian. There is a, uh, a huge disparity is there as well. Absolutely. Yes.
Bishop, you had mentioned you, uh, modified your application too. Did you, is it the same number? What's, what's the new number?
Well, it's two hundred and. New number is two hundred and twenty-two thousand and thirty.
Okay, so you did modify yours by about a hundred thousand and, and we appreciate that again, like I told the last people. Yes. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop.
Both of you.
Thank you both.
Commissioner, go ahead. One. It's in the twenty-six thousand square foot building you just talked about. This has nothing to do with the Portland thing. No. No. You'd have been listening and paying attention. You would have heard it. Just like we all do.
Everybody's getting impatient.
Okay, sir, go ahead.
I am Ken Conklin. I live at twenty-nine fifteen Crescent Drive Northeast in Warren. And I presently serve as the Vice President of the Upton Association. I have lived in Warren all of my life, which consists of eighty years. And Warren is extremely important to me. I thank you for letting us present our proposal. We are looking for a new roof. And a new HVAC system for the Upton House located at three eighty Mahoning Avenue. This historic house was saved from demolition in nineteen eighty-eight. And now serves as a true, and that's in all capital letters, a true gem in Trumbull County. It once served as the national headquarters for the National American Women's Suffrage Association. The home serves as a nonprofit organization. Listed as a national historic landmark and is on the Ohio Historic Building Inventory. We are a total volunteer organization. And are very responsible stewards of the Upton money. During COVID, we were completely shut down for over a year. And experienced the loss of rental income. You can rent the house for showers, weddings and so forth. The loss of membership and the loss of generous donations from community members. We are respectfully asking that you consider approving our request of sixty-four thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan. We have had thousands of people tour the Upton House and the count continues. We have had bus tours from many areas in Ohio, which brings business to local restaurants. We have had visitors from New England states. From England. No, it wasn't the Queen, but that's all right. And Australia. Just to name a few, plus hundreds of school tours. And there is no charge to tour the Upton House. So if any of you would like to tour the Upton. See me, I won't charge you. We do accept donations though. The Upton Association has proven to be an asset to Trumbull County. And your positive response will be greatly appreciated and needed. You can be assured the money will be spent for only this proposal. And updates will be provided to you as to the progress of this project. I thank you again for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I noticed on here, um, through the portal, you requested fifty-six thousand, but you mentioned sixty-four thousand in your speech.
We have new estimates and the cost has gone up.
Has you, have you changed that in the portal yet on the official application? Hey, you need to do that through the portal if you can get with Jim to make sure it's done through the computer as way we need to. If there's going to be an adjustment in figures, don't let you miss out for not following the process correctly. So Jim will help you with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sir. Commissioners, my name is Jeff Ford. I'm representing the Viana Historical Society. We're currently in a building, uh, that was built in the eighteen seventies. Prior to that, our meetings were held at the Township Hall, which the trustees worked with us very well. However, several meetings we've had, there were so many people that showed up, it was a beyond fire code. So we had to turn them away. Um, the society's been growing since shortly after the pandemic, but have prior to that, um, our funding was kind of stopped. With our, uh. Volunteer type stuff, the, the money kind of stopped coming in. Um, so back in July of two thousand and twenty-two, we submitted the application. We hadn't heard back. Um, so we resubmitted one April twenty-fourth of this year. We weren't sure if it got lost. We didn't fill it out right. Then the time constraint, we forgot about things. So we just wanted to try to get an update. A, if it was received, if it was filled out properly, um, and to see where we can go from there. Um, we put in a two requests. One was for sixty thousand dollars for our new building. We have a lot of repair work we have to do to make it handicap accessible. We have a fire escape in the back that needs rebuilt, roof, gutters, things like that. To where we can bring the public back into where our meetings are, which we don't charge. Um, we're also a nonprofit, just like the other historical societies are. Um, and then we submitted another one. It's our Viana Township Cemetery Restoration. We've been using our fundings that we've gathered over the years to go out and repair headstones. And get them re-leveled, reset, which are very expensive. Some of the obelisks can, uh, range anywhere from four to five thousand dollars apiece. Um, we don't want anything to fall down and topple if people walk through the cemeteries. There's several people that walk in the cemeteries. Um, for the recreation. So we did submit two, um, applications. As of everybody else's, all of their applications are important to them, but we just want to stress that we're trying to keep our history. Um, the society's been growing ever since shortly after pandemic when people could get back out there. So we just want to hope you can take that into consideration for us.
So sixty K and sixty K.
Yes. Um, do you know how we could find out eventually if you did receive them?
You are on the portal, you are on the spreadsheet.
Okay.
So it was received.
Does that mean it's filled out correctly?
Uh, Mr. Masaki, do you see any issues with the either of these? They.
Okay, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Howdy, uh, my name's Timothy Irons. I'm a citizen of, uh, the Scotts Creek Project in the New Township. Uh, I just had a couple of questions. Uh, you had discussed that you weren't making a decision on the project today, which I totally respect because you know of your. Legal counsel here. Uh, you have a meeting tomorrow, I believe it's six and the legal counsel is there, correct? But you've also said you're not making a decision then because it's a discussionary meeting, which I understand. Uh, is there a day that there is going to be a decision made?
So, so if. And that's fine. Uh, whatever moves it along, we, we want to move it along as well. As long as, hopefully, I, I think Tanya's had ample time to look at it. She should have an answer by tomorrow. If you guys want to come to the meeting for sure, uh, if she's.
I'll be, I'll be here at the meeting because I'm interested in the project, but I, I'm just looking for like a confirmation here. A decision will be made tomorrow.
Right. We're not the attorney. She may, she may need more time. If she says she can't do it, there, there's nothing we can do. Um, Gary.
The ARP projects. There, there are those real long ones, take about three pages on the agenda. So I was wanting to make you aware of that too. So if it is putting something on the agenda tomorrow. The proper way that we've done with all the other projects is that three page.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to, because the meeting's at, in the evening.
Yes.
Do you want to write it up for tomorrow then that way? Can you do that? And propose it tomorrow? And I'm asking you, can you put it in writing and make the motion?
All of the vote of clots, how much is that money? Was it eight hundred thousand? I need a. Gary, you would give me the project number and such for the agenda item if the, what the board wants to do.
As long as Tanya tomorrow says it's fine, we can proceed. But we won't know that until at night. You mean prior to the meeting? Sure. That way, if we hear from her before the meeting, we could put it on at our Wednesday meeting.
I, I, the meeting has been noticed. It takes a.
I'm talking about prior to that meeting. I'm talking about our, our regularly scheduled meeting, you know, if we get it prior to that. Of our Wednesday meeting that we could pass. Yeah, she could, she could give it to us by tomorrow, hopefully. And if you have the.
Yeah, well, that's the thing. I don't know if there's any way that she's, right. Uh, uh, we can't ask her to be a magician. I mean, she's got steps she's got to go through, I'm sure, compliance wise.
I, I'm just looking for a small amount of certainty. So if she doesn't. Like, okay, these documents, we're not going to have a vote tomorrow, let's say, when is the next available time that we would have?
Next Wednesday.
Next week.
Wednesday. Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Hi, yeah, my name is Gary Schaefer, Deputy Engineer, Trumbull County Engineers Office. And I thank the Board of Commissioners for allowing me to address the, the board. Uh, it's well known that back in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, that there was a, a big drop in the miles traveled by the, the general public. So there was a big reduction in the gas taxes that were generated. Um, very well documented by the Ohio Department of Taxation that the shortfall for Trumbull County was approximately five hundred. Ninety-nine thousand dollars in twenty and then in twenty-one, it was about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. For a total of eight hundred and, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, uh, over the two years. We started correspondence with the Auditor's Office and the Commissioner's Office back in twenty-one, I believe. But we haven't formally gone to the portal to do the application for those lost revenues. We will address that very soon. So. Just wanted to get that out of the way first. Uh, we have three applications, I believe, in the portal. Um, the first one I'll address is the twenty-two, uh, Bridge Rehabilitation Project. We have OPWC funds. In place and we are requesting, uh, the, the balance of three hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Now ARPA funds, those are for, uh, the rehabilitation of three bridges. One is on Brockway, Sharon Road in Brookfield. One's in the Village of Orangeville. That's on Hayes, Orangeville Road. And, uh, Warren Township Bridge number twelve is on Kibler Toot Road. So we'd be looking for ARPA funds for the local match for the rehabilitation of those three bridges. Uh, the second one is the twenty-three, twenty twenty-three Trumbull County Road Program. Uh, that is for, uh, the resurfacing of Jones Road in Liberty Township. Uh, the resurfacing of Howland Wilson and Squires Lane and Howland and Addison Road and Brookfield Township. That was a bubble project. We did not have funds in place. For the resurfacing this year. It looks like that grant agreement will now come through this year. So we are looking for ARPA funds in the amount of. Five hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars for the local match for that project. And then the last one, I believe we have an application for is the resurfacing of West Park and Austintown Warren Road. And Weathersfield and Warren Townships. We're requesting a local match of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, for that and that would be a late summer, early fall sale date and, um, project completion. And the last one I wanted to bring to your attention is we've been getting a lot of, um. Calls and we've been approached by several elected officials and fair board members regarding the condition of Everett Hall on the south end of the fairgrounds. We'd be looking at doing that project also. We haven't completed an application in the portal. But we will be soon and we'd really like your support on that project also. So, is there any questions? And address those.
Well, you wouldn't know the ever whole cost, but excluding that project, what's the total on the others?
Total.
Or just. Didn't bring that one. That's the only one I didn't bring. I didn't know you guys would be here today, so I didn't, I didn't include that in my packet. How much was it? The total?
One point two million.
One point two million. Okay.
Uh, Gary, how did you decide these ones are ARPA versus the other stuff you guys do on a daily basis?
I think just the programming with the budget that we have this year, Commissioner, uh, we, we package these ones in knowing we have to get these done and they're going to sell. And be completed this year. So instead of going for funding out in twenty-four, twenty-five or to be completed in twenty-six. To catch up on our budget shortfalls, we package these together. And the bridge project, you know, being throughout the county, it was, uh, the, the perfect choice. And then the other two was just scheduling. Yeah, and I didn't say that too, but yeah, it's well documented also that, uh, price of materials has increased at least thirty percent. And these applications, for the most part, it were, um, requested with either federal or state money two, three years ago. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
Mike Davis with Farmington.
Mike Davis with Farmington Township. We had actually put in a request for a hundred thousand dollars. We're trying to resurface some roads and. Improve some roads in the township. We actually just started our road department. Two years ago, up till that, they hadn't had one in about ten years. So we're trying to catch up and. Make some progress. Um, we did put the application in through the portal. And. Communication was great. Anytime I had an issue. I would contact Mr. Masaki and he got back to me literally within minutes. Um, so I believe the application is in order. Uh, and it's the same thing as a lot of the other ones. It's a timing because we're going to ha- still have to borrow some money. But it would drastically limit the amount that we're going to have to borrow to do this road.
So you have, you have two road projects on here on your application. One of them is uh. Two twenty five A and B Ensign Road Project. The other is York Street. One of them is a hundred thousand, the other is three thirty six.
York Street is not. Mine. Shouldn't be.
That one's not yours?
We have En- Ensign Road. Gary can probably.
That is good statements. Yeah.
Okay, they don't have it on the uh, they have it marked incorrectly on here.
Jim, do you see that on there?
This one didn't.
Right.
Okay. But yours is Farmington a hundred thousand dollars Ensign.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Gotcha.
Thank you. And, and just one other one real quick. Mesopotamia was here and I see Bloomfield is here. Farmington is in the, the same shape. A third of our townships. Are owned by O- ODNR. We get zero tax dollars from a third of our township that we can do nothing with. And that drastically puts us behind before we ever get started.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I am Terry Shavers with the Bracefield Community Foundation. We submitted an application through the portal for a historical sys- historical site in Braceville. So we wanted to just touch base with you and see whether or not there's any problems with the application. If we are in fact in the queue and that's why I'm here.
Okay, we have you in the portal. And Mr. Masaki, are there any issues that came up with Braceville? I think about two weeks ago you submitted this, right? Two or three week, well, when you presented to us at the, at the. Public meeting.
Yeah. Take a double check.
But it is, it is in the uh, portal. We have it on the spreadsheet here at. Two hundred and sixty four thousand.
So. Okay, and we are collaborating with the Braceville Historical Society. As well as the Trumbull County Historical Society. And they are willing to be our fiscal sponsors if that's an issue. Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
Um, thank you for uh, allowing townships to participate in this process. Our township has submitted through. A application for salt. Ten thousand dollars.
Yes. Okay.
Jim, is that on your list? I'm. Two hundred and ten thousand dollars salt storage structure.
Yes, sir. Um. Commissioners, the. It has a population of five thousand three hundred and thirty three. We do not have wherewithal to fund this building. Um, the. The proposed site. Um, is approximately a thousand meters from the uh, Yankee Creek. A watershed, which is currently being reviewed by the Ohio. And East Gate uh, for a, some water flow problems into the state of Pennsylvania. This would alleviate that process. And uh, allow the township to have a, a. Adequate salt storage facility uh, within its properties, on its properties. You gentlemen or ma'am have any questions that I can. Address or concern?
Where are you storing it now?
Uh, right now we are storing it onsite and through a cooperative uh, agreement with Randy Smith, the engineer. With that being said, um, I understand there is no long-term. A plan or lease for that facility on State Route seven. And that expires, I believe, in July. This is why Hubbard Township is seeking a long-term solution to the stal- salt storage. Issue.
Pretty self-explanatory, really.
Okay, sir.
Any question?
Lloyd, did you have any, any question?
Nope, that answers everything for me. Thank you so much.
Considering township.
Thank you, Fred.
Expires in July, he says of this year with the engineers.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Roger Peterson, Bloomfield Township. This request is in the portal. And this request is for a two bay addition to our fire station, primarily to house our ambulance and our medic vehicle truck. I flagged a page on there specifically because I think you need to see it on the map. In that map. You'll see. That out of the twelve townships. That's been identified. There's three full-time ambulances. And then there's a couple volunteer ambulances. Putting an addition onto our fire station puts us in the center of the no man's zone. So that in a number of years, if the current push for the volunteer EMS goes through, that goes to an EMS district. It puts Bloomfield in a position to help out neighboring communities. Since we started our ambulance district, my volunteers have covered ninety five percent of all of their calls with an ALS crew. ALS means Advanced Life Support. We run mutual aid to Mespo Township. We run mutual aid to Green Township. And we are now in a. Position to where we can start offering mutual aid to other townships. But what this does is it puts in addition on the station. It gets our ambulance in a. Easier way to get out. It actually puts our medic response vehicle, which sits outside and locked. It gets it inside. And then it allows us future expansion for an EMS district if that ever gets. Pushed and if the volunteer ever drops out. Thank you.
Okay, Roger, while, while you're up there. I see there's also um. In the portal, Bloomfield Community Commons. It says Town Hall Roof Project, but is that? Is that something different than the park project that we talked about?
The Town Hall, the town, the roof and the park project is one.
Okay.
The fire station addition is more of a regional project, which would be the second one. And I know the roof park project has been submitted to legal. Um, I checked with legal, I checked with Tanya today and she has not heard back or has not prepared anything back yet. So I don't know if that project has gone through or not.
So that is, that's been about a month too. It's taken her about a month to approve that.
Yeah, and it was rather straightforward.
Right.
So, but we.
You, you submitted. A really good packet. That just gives me concern. I hope we can get an answer from. Tanya quickly on these other ones.
Some, sometimes this happens and wheels turn slow, but appreciate what you guys are doing and what you go through. And how you're trying to get the money out to the communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything of concern regarding ARPA stuff?
Sharon Grover from Mespo Historical. So our grant had gone through the legal process. And we were just wondering what our next step is for the Historical Society. That's for the HVAC and the Handicapped Accessible Grant that we wrote. So we got an email saying that it went through. So does it, will it go on the agenda and then one of us representatives will have to come down?
I don't remember being notified yet of that. And that's something, Jim, we need to look and see if we can get notification when it does come back.
Actually have the letter.
Okay, and, and that's something if we do, I'll get it from.
So you'll just, you'll just get a hold of us and then the next process will be you guys decide, we'll come in front of all three of you.
When it comes back from legal, that it's legal, then any one of the three commissioners can put it on the agenda. During. Uh, for a vote. And then at that time, we can discuss. The amount raising, lowering, what the amount's going to be, adjust them, the agenda item at that time.
Okay, I appreciate, I'll show Attorney Masaki the letter.
So you want her to wait on the one that's already come back from legal until the other ones go through legal?
So. With all due respect, Commissioners, all three of you, our application has been in since May of last year. We're not just coming to the table today. I worked on this in, since May. So it's gone through legal. Everything's time sensitive. So for our Historical Society, we have our chairperson here. You know, we have a lot of events going on, so we need to plan. When are they going to do the HVAC? And I, I appreciate everything you're doing, but just keep in mind, our application was in May of last year.
What do, what are you going to do, Commissioner, to make a solution and not just address all the problems? Are you going to have any input or make a solution?
Okay, I'm, I'm the chair of the Historical Building uh, in Mespo.
Yes.
And I was just, I was just, we were wondering. Because we were hoping to get the heating and cooling in before the ox roast. Which is the end of June, you know, first of July. So we were just wondering, you know, where we're at, so.
Hey, where, where it sits now, I guess, just officially where it is. It has come back from the attorney then, once we get notification, like I said. Legally, any one of the three, and it takes two of us to vote on it, could pass it. And that is something, we got to look at the big picture of everything, but that's where it sits right now.
Okay.
Not that anything's been. Put on the agenda, not that anything will, but that's what the process is.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hi, I'm Christine Cope. I'm from Corlin, Ohio, but I'm the president and CEO of United Way of Trumbull County, right down the road. We submitted an application. I did check with Mr. Masaki to make sure that it was received and I believe it is in the portal. When we uh, submitted the application. I submitted it for one million dollars. With the thought that we broke it down into different projects. So that if the million dollars in full was not approved, that you would consider what are the amounts that would go towards a specific project? Or program in this case. Is that the case? Would that, do you understand that? Or should I apply for each one individually?
You, your, your amount is there, but I, I would like to see if there's a better chance. Maybe tomorrow, maybe at our public workshop for you with an amount that big. Most, most people that had amounts that were, you know, a hundred thousand or more. Did some form of presentation to us so we can understand it better.
Sure.
We could read the application, but I think something of that magnitude. If you could prepare a presentation on that, because that is a big chunk. That it would make us understand it better and understand. Where you are with it, maybe be, being, makes us more qualified to ask and answer questions to help you. Hone in on what's. The sweet spot here, what is really needed of, of all.
Yeah, absolutely. And I won't go into all of it here and, 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 you know, for the sake of time. I was under the impression I'd be invited to do a presentation, so that was why I was here today. How do I get? Um, how do I go about doing a presentation? Do I just show up at a meeting? Is, is that all that it is or?
I, I would, I would say on Tuesdays, we got the open me. That's where a lot of people have done their presentations to us.
Okay.
And then Commissioner French goes here, you can meet with her after if she doesn't want to attend that meeting.
Okay.
But, but I think there needs to be some form of.
Yeah, absolutely. We, that, that would be great.
That could be done at a regular meeting on Wednesdays too. All three of us are here at that time.
Okay.
And if you, it did it at the end, but I would, I would give a heads up. Uh, to our clerk, just let her know you're coming because the agenda, if it is really big, she can give you some feedback on timeframe and things like that.
Okay, so I can follow up with Paula.
That would be great.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you for smiling the whole time we've had them here in the front.
She's always.
Sometimes there was, were things to smile about and other times, no. Um, I just have a question because I was at the meeting that was in Johnston Township. And I've had, um, I have one proposal from Hartford Township that I'm going to submit through the portal. Uh, for our park, but I've had people in our township. Uh, contact me and want to know if there was any infrastructure. Uh, monies available for natural gas lines. Because this has been going on for a long time and I know I had talked to Denny about it uh, at one point. It is, is that uh. Something that is not possible because it would be money that would be spent for a private. Company.
Potentially, yeah. And that's regulated by the state. You know, we have nothing to do with um. Gas lines or any of that.
But I, you know, they keep calling me and saying, and saying, you need to do this, you need to do this. And I said, I really. With all the research that I've done on it, I thought this is not something that we can spend this type of money on. But I just want to be able to come back to them and say, I've checked this out.
Well, uh, you know, I'm not the attorney on that. I mean, if you want to put a, um.
I, I have a note here that I will ask her tomorrow when she's here.
Would you do that for me?
On that?
Okay.
And then I can get, I'll get back to you.
I'm, I'm probably going to come to the meeting tomorrow night too, because I'm interested on a lot of these things and I, I do want to submit my uh. Project for Hartford Township for our park. So, but I would submit that also if it was a possibility, but to me. When I'm reading everything, I don't think that's something that uh, these funds would cover. But I would like to check on it for sure so that I can give them an answer that's. True.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll ask that question tomorrow together.
Okay, thanks, Denny. Okay, and uh, thank you for all the work that you're doing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioners, it's Fred Hanley again from Hubbard Township. Just what the, uh, trustee uh, Whitman said. I also had a inquiry from citizens about a gas line extension. I did express to them what was conveyed at the meeting in uh, Johnston. So it's kind of up in the air. Do you need us? Number one, can a township submit more than one? Application?
Sure, they can submit as many applications as they want.
Okay.
Uh, that doesn't necessarily mean they'll get it all, but I would, I would ask the towns just prioritize. When they do that, at least let us know verbally. If you're going to cut anything, this is the one that needs cut. If this is the one we really need, this is one we'd like to have, you know, potentially. And you could do that in your presentation. And in regards to. That. Gas line question, there was a meeting in Johnson. The, the state reps did not attend and we did request, we have another meeting somewhere with them so we get the state questions answered. So, and then we could see if it ties in with ARPA or not after. After we understand that process a little better and.
Okay, so to be on the safe side, Commissioner, go ahead and submit one for a gas line extension?
I would wait until tomorrow till we ask the question. If Tanya tells us flat out tomorrow, no, I don't, wouldn't want you to waste your time.
Got you. Okay.
Yes.
If that, I wouldn't.
And that's where I guess we, again, prioritizing what's best for your citizens, all of them in general. And what's best for the county. Understand. Understand.
Commissioners, thank you for listening.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything in regards to ARPA? Okay, if not, we will have the same exact meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the Trumbull County Agricultural Center. We encourage if you had a trustee or another person you know in your township that might want to hear some of the stuff we talked about, or if you have more questions or if this sparked new questions, please encourage them to attend. I think it's going to be highly attended also. I, I see six or eight people that weren't here today that told me they're coming tomorrow. So I think tomorrow will be a big crowd again too, and hopefully this process, it's a work in progress. Um, but I understand it a lot better now. Commissioner Cantal Mesa, do you have questions regarding that or?
No, I look forward to the meeting tomorrow. I mean, obviously, if you, I know the room has sort of thinned out, but if you, if you had your answers, questions answered today, then obviously, I don't know if there's going to be a need for you to come, but, uh, if you know anybody that, that does need questions answered, or that, you know, uh, if you'd feel more comfortable coming tomorrow, because our legal consultant will be there, uh, I urge you to do that. I think it's been a very productive meeting, you know, the, 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 at the end of the day, uh, we have, we have a chance to do once in a lifetime type of stuff in Trumbull County. And, um, we don't want to squander it, we want to, we want to make sure that we spread it around as much as we can, but we want to make sure we're doing worthwhile projects, uh, all along the way. So, uh, we, we've heard some very different and eclectic and worthwhile projects here today. So, um, you know, it just makes our, our jobs that much tougher, but, uh, that's what we're here to do. So I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Malloy for putting the meeting together. It was very informative, uh, for the board, and I look forward to tomorrow. Thank you, Denny.
And, and I do, still a piece of the puzzle missing for me, and until I meet Tanya, myself, the attorney, and get some of these questions asked directly to her, then I think I'll be more educated to help, help you out myself, and I think we all will collectively. And I, I look forward to her attendance tomorrow, because she's kind of the gatekeeper of all this. We could submit it, but it's comes down to her to give us the thumbs up or thumbs down, and then, then it's up to us to decide what we want to do after that. But nothing happens unless she gives us a green light. And that is, um, that's her job, that's the process's job, that's the check and balance that we have here, and that's why she's getting paid the big money to do it. It's already been appropriated in here, you know, $250,000 to do this stuff for us. She's got to earn her pay with that and tell us yes or no, and keep us legal. That's the biggest priorities, is legality of this and not spending money that we can't spend, or spending money in a haphazard way that, that isn't responsible use of the mon, money. Commissioner Frenchco, do you have anything final to wrap it up? Could Mr. Masaki do that? Isn't that what his job description is? Okay, I'll weigh your consideration of what you have. I, I don't know that we have any employee that has extra time in their day to do anything. We have two employees that are getting trained right now. We have that right here.
We have it all. I don't understand.
It's not the way you want it, but all the data is here, it's not the way you envision it, but it's here. It is here, and it's, it's separated alphabetically by each sub-division. I mean, if they're a township, it's, I, I don't understand what more, what magic you want someone else to perform. You want us to, an artist to paint a picture that you envision in your head, but you want them to use their brush to do it? And I, I don't understand how that's possible. We're all working together on this, I'd be happy to help out with anything regarding that, but I don't, I don't see where there's a magic pill or magic employee. Which one, pull one of them off of there that you don't see?
Doesn't it say Mespo?
Yep, please.
Subdivision, I think they're confused, I think everybody's confusing subdivision versus category. So they're thinking, I think, what location you're saying by subdivision? What they're looking for, what she's looking for is what category? That's where we have a little bit of a problem, because from what I understand, and I hate to put anybody on the spot here, but from what I understand from, from Paula, the categories are up to either Mr. Masaki and or with Tanya.
With Tanya, Tanya tells us the category.
So I'm, so that's my question to the board, I guess, is, is if we can't get that, maybe tomorrow, uh, we could work on categorizing together collectively, I'm not sure.
If we're picking Tanya $250,000.
We should, I would agree.
In a category.
I would agree, I think that that's a fair ask. Oh, I think it's, I think it's fair.
I disagree. I disagree. We can't figure it out ourselves, so how are we going to expect, how are we going to expect the clerk to figure it out?
Well.
We can't figure it out all the time.
I would, I mean, at least Tanya can give us, even if she can just provide us with what category it falls in, then we could input it into the spreadsheet, whatever the case may be, but.
Could you make a template or an outline and then we'd have someone do it? I've never seen one, if you get one to me, I'll get it to Tanya and we'll see if we can work on it.
There was three categories, ma'am, that you were asked, that were asked, that were of legal analysis, and I sent them to Ms. Alex. Cher has provided everything to the best of her understanding, so.
But that is an Excel spreadsheet, y'all, you needed, if you want to change the titles.
Hi, everyone, thank you. She could add anything.
And I, I don't agree or disagree, but unfortunately, it's not in my role and responsibility, so that puts me in a very awkward space. Um, and I have to preface with that, I need to kind of stay in my lane. Yes, I'm, I very well could do this spreadsheet, however, that, that's not my role, and I have to be clear, and I have to make sure that if it's somebody else's role, that I don't do, you know, union work, or that I don't do clerical work, that's not in my job description. With that being said, uh, it really is, unfortunately, my hands are tied here. It's whatever the board wants to do, but I do believe that we are paying a lot of money to an attorney. Uh, so if we were to reach out to her and ask her to at least help us categorize these things, and we could then implement it into the spreadsheet, whatever the case may be. But we need to work together. I'm here to tell you guys that, I know we know this, um, and I really don't want to go down that path right now in this meeting. But we do need to work together collectively, I think what we see is a lot of, um, we all need to work together, but there are some things, we also have to acknowledge that there are some things that, that clerical staff can't do. So if I can help with that process, I'm more than happy to do that. But if a clerical, if staff tells me that they don't have legal analysis.
I, I don't believe it, I think it's misunderstanding, I don't think the staff would ever refuse this.
I, I.
I understand, but the three things I said are totally require legal analysis, and I think we're category, I'm talking about revenue loss, that sort of thing, I'm not talking.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect that you know revenue loss, I'm sorry.
I know what it is, but I know we have 10 mil, I'm saying we're not qualified for that. If it's something to add, uh, something small, I know Cher would be happy to do something like that, but that's what I was talking.
It would, it would have to be told her what the category.
Correct.
It's not her job to delineate that.
And that's what.
Or her knowledge, or, or mine.
And that is okay, then I think that we need to then make that request.
If it comes back from Tanya and.
We can have that, absolutely.
Put on a sheet in a category.
Wonderful, thank you.
Those have all come back from legal, those have all gone legal, and Tanya has classified them already?
So she's talk, okay, this is, she's talking classification versus whether it's historical, water, sewer. When she says subdivision, and I'm just trying to help bridge the gap here, because I think we're, when you say subdivision, you mean you want to see village, city, is that what you mean?
I understand that, and that's all on here, it's already here. Which one's not, point me out one that's not.
Yeah.
You, you, you don't understand what Gustavus means, you don't understand what Bloomfield means, you don't understand what Bezetta means. You don't understand what Warren City means.
Whatever the case may be. So like, for example, number one on animal welfare, it just says animal welfare. So what she's saying is, yeah, so having a category that denotes it as nonprofit and or what area it serves, not countywide.
And that would help how?
That's what I don't know, so that's why I bow out.
I don't understand, well, how would that help?
Can we, can we put an end to this, please? This is getting ridiculous.
Okay, that concludes our meeting for today. We will re-adjourn this with another special meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the Ag Center.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa, Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. Couple minutes. Got it, you got it. I'll bring the sign-in sheets, because I, they have to say, uh, the special, they have to follow the format. But, um, we'll, I'll be at 5:30, so bring them early.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Because what we'll do is off the table there, so it's you're not going like here, words going out to everybody, nobody knows.
So appreciate it, Mr. Edgar, thank you. I'm sure you, you impress everybody, you volunteer your services for the good of the county, so how can you do more than that, Mr. Edgar? Thank you for everything, we appreciate it, and that's a great idea.